This meeting of July 17th, 2023 to order. And if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, Alabas.
Yes, here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Felkins.
Here. At this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda, we, it does have an amendment that would need to be read. Please.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to remove the Paul McMullen Memorial Five Run, 5K Run Walk, item V-A.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers. Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. It would be greatly appreciated.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Smeltzer, and I wanted to come this evening to thank you and the council for appointing me to the Wexford County Airport Authority. I wanted to thank you in person and also give you an opportunity to put a face with a name. So I'm looking forward to serving there, and I don't want to miss this opportunity to remind you that Wings and Wheels is August 26th, and we would love to see you join us. It's really going to be a nice event this year.
Wonderful. Nice to meet you. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the agenda, excuse me, the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June 19th, along with the minutes from the closed session that was also held on June 19th.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers. Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to our public hearing this evening. If you'd like to introduce that, Marcus.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. While I do the quick introduction, Sandy, if you could please pull the image up. This has been somewhat of a long time coming. The city and Inland Lakes that is represented here tonight by ownership have been talking for quite a long time. It's been actually a number of years that Inland Lakes has been looking at possibly expanding and redeveloping part of their site to accommodate a new line of machinery that they've been, they've been seeking to bring into Cadillac that'll also equal some additional jobs. And what really creates a perfect situation, if you look at the television sets, is the somewhat triangular shaped property. That triangular shaped property, the city acquired after it went through essentially a salvage sale through the county. It went nowhere. The county asked the city if we were interested in receiving the property, and the city, again, this goes back quite a number of years, essentially said, you know, maybe someday we'll, we'll look at putting some kind of a pocket park of sorts or a little landing for people to access the Clam River and the Greenway. This might be property in which that could, that could accommodate that use. So the city said sure, and frankly, for the better part of the last decade, sat on it. Bringing you up to speed as to where we are now, where we are now is Inland Lakes does need to move forward in acquiring some additional property to be able to accommodate an expansion to their internal footprint of their building. And by doing that, they're going to lose very necessary parking that they need for the workers that come there, especially some additional workers that'll be eventually coming to that site. The city, at the same time, has some funding now available from a Consumers Energy grant that we got that'll help us be able to create a micro park there, coupled with other funding that we have, such as ARPA funds, and coupled with a donation that Inland Lakes is looking at, at making to the city in exchange for a stretch of property as indicated on the, on the map. Almost like killing two birds with one stone, the city will be able to further enhance and incentivize economic development, bring new jobs into the community, help a longstanding company that's been here for approximately, I think, 50 years?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight years, remain sustainable and growing in the community in the spot that they're at, while at the same time, the city will be able to, be able to eventually move forward and construct the micro park that we would like to be able to construct as well. And so, you know, the property is not always looking its best. It is a property that we eventually do mow. However, it's one that we're excited to see eventually get cleaned up and adaptively reused as a part of the sale, or I should say, the donation to Inland Lakes and their donation back to the city. So again, the map shows existing property lines. It shows the swath of the area that Inland Lakes is looking, that's the orange color. The darker green color is a, is a public easement area that there would be left open. And then the remaining city-owned parcel would be used to accommodate parking and the micro park adjacent to the river.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to this hearing.
Well, we wanted to thank the City Council for your consideration of this proposal.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, my name's Carl Kew. I'm CEO of Inland Lakes. I'll sign it later. My son Rich is the point man for this project, but he's in a golf league at Cabaret Fay on Monday nights, and oh, boy, that's important stuff, you know, so I don't golf. But no, we, we plan on automating, so it'll be less employment impact than normal, but will still be an employment increase. We're probably looking at seven more people, and we've got robots in there now, and we find that in order to compete, that's what we've got to do. We've got to automate more and more all the time. And that's all I got to say, really. That's all. I'll sign my name and go, sit down, shut up.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak today?
I don't know.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion amongst the council.
By micro park, Marcus, do you mean I'm hoping slides and things for kids or just a couple picnic tables? Yeah, it's a couple of picnic tables, place to park, and an access point to the river. Okay. Okay. Then it'd be nice if we had the summer crew down there and helped clean up that section of Clam River that looks pretty atrocious. So, passing thought there, while they're still here till August, anyway.
I, I do have a question, just so I can seek some clarification, because I had some constituents call, and wondering why, wondering if we have had that property appraised, and I know the answer to the question, but I wondered if you would share with the public why we've gone the direction we have.
Sure, sure. So the property has not been appraised. The property itself is illustrated, or pictured, actually, with the illustrations on top of it, is a real awkward shape. And adjacent to the river and the necessary setbacks that ultimately we would require if that property were to be sold and tried to be used adaptively as another location for a manufacturing or industry would be incredibly limited based upon several factors, location of the river, its shape, and its size. There are some contaminants on the property that the city and Inland are well aware of that was done through the proper environmental due diligence. That wouldn't necessarily prevent somebody from building on that site. However, again, it's just another encumbrance that would already be a really tight site for anybody to build on because of its location and its adjacency to, again, the river, and of course, its adjacency to the manufacturer next door. The city also didn't pay anything for the site as well. It came to us, you know, essentially through the failed salvage tax sale. So everything was discharged on that site through the, through that process in and of itself. And our vision and objective for even getting that site from day one was really not to look at trying to turn a profit on it and turn it into a site for industrial construction of another manufacturer or another facility, but rather to try to figure out how we could carve it up a little bit and, and use it as a place for people to park at so that they could access the Clam River. Because there really, if you think about it, there really isn't anywhere within the city limits. Even the, the Clam River by the Sound Garden off of, off of Chestnut Street, you know, you have to park and then walk. You can't really park on site. There really isn't anywhere to, to, in the city limits, of course, to get onto the river. So we thought that could be a great place. And then, of course, as I mentioned, knowing that Inland Lakes for quite a number of years has mentioned that they have been looking at eventually needing to expand, we just felt that this was a project that would really serve both of those needs.
Good. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
I think it's a fantastic use of the property, benefits the public and the company that's been here for 78 years, and helping them not only keep their roots here, but expand. Based on that, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to approve sale of real property, portion of 326 Haynes Street.
I'd second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers. Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so we don't have any communications tonight. That was removed from the agenda, and that takes us to the City Manager's report.
Thank you. The first item is a request regarding water well cleaning, Mayor, members of the City Council. We issued bids for basically pulling our well pump, casing, screening, cleaning, disinfecting, and inspecting parts for damage. This is something that we're looking at doing at the Crosby Well Field Site. We used to refer to that as the new site. It's no longer the new site. It's the, it's the, the new old site, I guess, is how we could talk, talk about it. But in any event, we did receive three bids. The recommendation is to go with Northern Pump and Well, which happens to be the lowest bid out of Lansing, Michigan, in the amount of $56,320. Funds are available in the Water and Sewer Fund accordingly for this project.
Okay. I'll make a motion to award the water well cleaning project to Northern Pump and Well for the bid amount of $56,320.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Shippers. Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This next item is now still a utilities-related item, but it's on the other side of the utilities aisle, if you will, regarding the wastewater treatment plant facility. That's the facility off of Platt Road. This is in regards to window and door replacement. We also put bids out for this project. However, we only received one response, and that's from the City Glass Shop. This is a project that includes the removal and restoration of doors and windows throughout the main building at the plant, many of which are many decades old at this point in time. And the amount being recommended to approve is $138,250. Funds are appropriated within the Water and Sewer Fund for this project as well. It is an extensive project. I do have with us this evening the supervisor of our treatment plant, Mr. Patrick Miller, who's in the audience. So if there's any specific questions, we can do our best to get them addressed.
I wondered who that was. Hi, Patrick.
He makes sure that when we flush, it all goes where it should. Yes. Does anybody have a specific date as how long that's been there? It says decades.
Thirties, forties?
Patrick, if you can go to the mic. Thank you.
I know it's been there a while.
Yeah, so the building's been there for a long time, since the sixties, but I asked some of the more senior operators, and they thought maybe the windows and doors have been there since the eighties.
Okay.
So they weren't exactly sure on a date.
Yeah. Yeah, time to replace.
Yeah.
It's always nice when we have a Cadillac company that we're, that's winning the bids, so.
We only had one bid put in? Only had one bid. You know, we send it out in the normal way that we send all of our bids out. It ends up down in the Grand Rapids market and in the Traverse City market, and obviously contractors here will see it as well, but nobody bid. So, other than, other than the one company.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to award the window and door replacement project to City Glass Shop for the bid amount of $138,250.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers. Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Moving right along, I believe this is the final item under my report this evening. It's Cadillac Community Center Painting Project, and painting is probably an understatement in terms of what it really includes. It includes not just painting of the, of the Quonset Hut or the Drill Duck area, which is a common area within the facility. The facility, by the way, is the community center. It's the former Naval Reserve Center, which is probably how most people in the community still understand the, the facility in terms of what it's named. It's the home to Up North Arts, it's the home to the Senior Center, and it's the home to the Wexford County Genealogy Association. And just again, for some context, the city by charter can only lease the facility to certain types of tenants, those being, they have to be nonprofits, and all of those facilities, or excuse me, all of those tenants certainly meet that, meet that definition. The communication within your packet explains a little bit about the relationship that the city and Up North Arts have enjoyed since they moved into the facility. Up North Arts has spent a lot of time and sweat equity and, and time raising money and funds to help bring that facility back to life, at least with respect to the spaces that they're renting from us. Again, the area that's being painted with walls being fixed and whatnot is an interior space that, space that's shared by all. It's not a space that's just used by them. In fact, the city uses it for election services. Up North Arts went through their own process and interviewed painters that would be able to do the job, as well as restore the seals that are the old Navy seals that are on the walls, and made a recommendation to us in terms of who they would like to use. This project is being funded through the city. It is a project that was budgeted for, and it was in our CIP as well. If it is going to move forward tonight, we are asking for a waiver of bid to use the, to use the contractor that they would like, like us to use. If we don't get a waiver of bid, then we would look at having to bid it in order to come back and then ask again for, for permission to move forward. Amy Gonzalez is here this evening on behalf of Up North Arts and wanted to present information to us, I believe.
Yes.
Yes. So, thank you.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Amy Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of Up North Arts, and I'm here to speak about what we have been working on with Owen for the better part of the past year, just trying to understand the process and the timing of what we needed to do. We call it our beautification project. Firstly, I'd like to tell you a little bit, elaborate a little bit more on what Marcus said, about Up North Arts. We're located in the Old Naval Reserve, and this project is focused on those buildings, the three Quonset Huts. Up North Arts is a community art center offering art classes, artistic events, kids' classes, art camps, music lessons, just to name a few. We are also a group that puts the art fair on. You guys, we're, we're kind of behind the scenes for the artist part of the art fair. We work closely with CAPS to collaborate on CAPS Crew, and we work closely with other nonprofits to provide a space for them as well, of which the space would be used for them. The three Quonset Huts, formerly the Old Naval Reserve, house Up North Arts, the Senior Center, Reader's Theater, and the Wexford Genealogy Society Organization. Our momentum and outreach has really gained speed over the past year. We are proud to say we were awarded the Rotary Grant for this year totaling $40,000. We are purchasing a large digital sign to sit on Chestnut Street for announcements, for not only the tenants of the building, but also for other nonprofits that need help getting their message out there. We were recently also awarded the 101 Women Who Care Cadillac Grant to purchase a portable sink for our kids' classes. We have also received numerous grants and other, and offer specific scholarships to individuals and purchase supply, to purchase supplies to add to our class offerings. We are excited and engaged, and we are really doing good things in the community. Hope you guys all see that. Our beautification project is broken into three phases. Phase one is what we're here to talk to you about tonight, repairing, power washing, and repairing really being a significant word here, because if you, if you've been in the drill deck, there are massive holes in the wall, and it's a significant job to repair, power wash, and paint. Phase two of our beautification project is the, is exterior irrigation, landscaping design, and landscaping install. Phase three is the fun part and what we get really excited about. It's our art walk. Through the landscaping that we've just done in phase two, incorporating visual art on the walls, tree carvings, and maybe you guys have gotten asked what's going on with the trees out front, we will, our goal is to get those carved, and we'll also have 3D art and sculptures as you walk through with seating and everything in this art walk. Our goal with phase two and three is to fund it with grants, sponsorships, fundraising, and donations. We're excited about it, and we're, we're hoping that adds beauty to the end of the walkway. And all of this would sit at the end of that beautiful Keith McCallum walkway in that newly installed pickleball courts. So back to phase one. We're requesting the city pay to repair and paint the interior of the middle Quonset Hut, which we are calling our community center, and power wash and paint the exterior of all three huts. The three Quonset Huts are in desperate need, like I mentioned, of some serious TLC. Doing these improvements will not only prolong the longevity of the buildings, but also provide the community with a bright, clean, refreshing space to use. As part of our commitment to this project, we have collectively purchased 150 chairs, 15 tables, and a stage for groups to use in the community center. We started this process about a year ago and received quotes over this timeframe. A year ago, we were quoted, quoted $11,000 for an interior painting only and $40,000 at last year's prices, last year, for both interior and exterior painting and power washing. Our most recent quote for the entire job, including supplies, is from Jeff Campbell, coming in at $36,500, of which $9,500 is required upfront. Due to Jeff's long-term standing as a professional painter in the community, it is our suggestion to award the project to Jeff. He worked with his father, Adrian, for many years and continued the business on his own for a total of 37 years. We are also mindful, as Marcus mentioned, of the historic significance of the Navy emblems on the wall of the community center. We have contracted with artist Shannon Nelson to recreate these emblems. Once the walls are repainted and repaired and repainted, and you may be familiar with Shannon, she painted the butterfly, and she's also done the courthouse mural, so she's quite a talented artist. A donation has already been secured to cover those emblems. You know, we're here to, I guess, to thank you for your support and, and look for your final approval to move forward with securing Jeff Campbell at a cost of $36,500. Any questions?
What color are we going to paint it?
Bright pink.
What? What?
Bright pink.
Miami?
Real similar to the same color they are.
Okay.
Very similar. So.
We're lucky to have someone with your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Well, we could still do pink, you know, it's not off the table.
Miami. Miami.
We'd like to thank you for your time and your continued support. You guys always support us where the, in the arts, and we really appreciate that. We invite you at any time to come see us, pre, post, and all of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I didn't mention it already, I'll mention it again. Funds are available within the, within the community center budget that we have, so.
Is Marcus, no, I hit him with a bunch of questions today when I went through the packet. Complete supporter of what's going on there. However, we have some serious duties in relation to how money is expended through the charter. And I was very concerned that our information didn't give us what, how much the outside was, how much the inside was, because specifically, there are leases with the organizations inside, and they specifically outline duties of costs and expenses and what the city would and would not be responsible for paying for interior. The, so my, my one concern is I saw no information to see that we've checked those to make sure we take care of the systems, we take care of the roof, the outside, power washing outside as part of the maintenance or repair would be our duty. However, after some of the concessions in 2018, the obligations for interior of rented spaces were the tenant's, so I don't know that we could approve that. Common areas are different, but I don't have any information, and I only have part in one tenant's lease to look at it. So I'm a little nervous about moving forward tonight without answering those questions, and that is what I would look from staff. If we're going to spend $40,000, we need to make sure we've looked at the project. We can say, these are our duties for sure. These, we have to figure out. I don't think we can rely, and I appreciate your work on doing the, talking to painters and that, but under the charter, I don't think we can rely on a third party and just say, they looked into how mu- much it might cost, and therefore, we're going to waive competitive bidding and waive our process. That's our duty. We don't know, I don't have from the information that the processes that the city follows in doing competitive bidding were followed at all, not that you would have to, because that's not your duty, but it is our duty to make sure that that happens. So I guess I'd make a motion to table it tonight to get the information we need, because we, as the stewards of the money pursuant to the charter, cannot just approve an exterior, interior job for a general fund of $40,000 without knowing that we're properly borrowing. Number one, the leases, and then, number two, the charter, because for those bids, we would have to do the competitive bidding.
If I, if I may jump in and just provide information to City Council. So City Council can table. City Council, if you were to look at moving it forward, the only way it can go forward would be with a unanimous vote to waive. Short of a unanimous vote to waive the bidding, it, you don't get to the step two. So if we look at tabling it, that, that's fine. What I would look at doing on the staff side is trying to find something that talks about responsibilities for the common areas that might be clearer than what is in the document, the lease document I shared earlier. I don't know if I have anything clearer than what's already out there, other than by communicating verbally that the city has always been responsible, we've always taken the responsibility of maintaining the common area spaces within the facility, similar to what we do in the DEQ building. Much different funding structure, so it wouldn't be, it's completely, completely apples and oranges in terms of trying to compare those facilities, but just in terms of, of common area for the community center or the Naval Reserve Center, we've, we, being the city, have always maintained those, those spaces within the building. But we'll try to find some documents that, that help clarify what councilmembers ask.
And here's my concern, again, I'm in full supportive, but we have to do it the right way. That's how we worked with the whole Naval Reserve back before 2018 and getting the credit for rent and, and getting that stuff. That was all followed the process. Now that we have contracts in place that identify that, we need to know from staff that all the contracts have been reviewed, what obligations are each, and then, because the exterior is absolutely the city's obligation, bidding out that part of the project, and if we can do it as a whole, if we have the information of what the interior is and what the obligations are.
And that was, that was going to be my next, my actual, my question to City Council, which is, if we're going to table it, for me to get additional information and try to clarify what the leases say or don't say, do you want us to not bring it back short of also bidding it? Because I don't want- Because I don't want to, you know, table it, come back in whatever it is, two, three weeks from now, and then...
If I may. I also talked to Marcus earlier today, and the one thing that caught my eye and the reason that I called was I was concerned about the $40,000 expense or $36,500. The fact that we, as a city, it's our responsibility, but we didn't go get the competitive bid by charter. And so, we had the same conversation, and again, you know I love everything you do, and we're supportive. But that concerned me because I think that would open us up for questions or other things.
And that's fine, and I, trust me, Council, I'm not being argumentative or defensive in any way, but Council needs to know that you do have, within your authority, the ability to waive bids for things.
But I don't think in this instance, we should do that.
And that's okay. Like I said, I'm not arguing that you should or shouldn't, I'm just saying you do have that.
And I'm, you know, fully supportive of the expense, the interior, the exterior, there's no problem with the lease. It just, it needs to be bid out, I think so too.
And I think if it helps, and I'll make this as my motion to table it, I think staff needs to get us back the information as to what our obligations are and what the project is, and I don't think that stops staff from having the bidding process, because if we find... We know the exterior absolutely is, we can look at the common areas, and then to be able to present us with that information with then the bids that have come in for it, that's what the public wants to know in relation to us approving a $40,000.
And that was the clarification that I wanted.
Does that help? Yeah, bid it out, for sure.
Do it simultaneously, so things can move forward.
So that would be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Alun Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
So, yeah.
So, because it was our understanding from Owen that we could go out and solicit these ourselves. So, we probably, that was wrong, right? That we should have...
We're feeling, the council is feeling uncomfortable with that. We know that you guys did all of that legwork with a collaborative spirit, but, you know, when I read that today, I picked up the phone right away because that is not how I would see us approving $40,000 expense.
So tell me what this means next.
Someone within the city goes out and gets these quotes?
Yes.
Okay.
As we do for anything over $7,500.
And Jeff certainly should submit his bid on the project to the city. You know, you're gonna have a line item list, go ahead Marcus.
Schedule some time with Marcus, you know, tomorrow, right away.
Or just hang tight.
Or hang tight until after the meeting, and he can explain the whole thing to you.
Thank you.
During public comment would be better.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment.
Molly Fryer, Advisory Board for Up North Arts. Two years ago, or more, we did elicit a bid from Eldon Powell, that was the $11,000 for the interior. I tried to reach out to them last year and again this year, and they are too busy to even answer their phone. I tried two other people last year. One was $40,000, which seemed very high, and the other one was less than that, I can't remember who it was from. So, and I tried to get Jeff to bid last year, but he was so busy that he didn't have time. So, we tracked Jeff down again this year. We boldly stepped forward and scheduled him to start tomorrow because here's the timeframe we were hoping to work under, and I know it doesn't mean anything, it's not gonna change anything, I just want you to know. He was going to start tomorrow. There is an annual Naval Reserve picnic held at the building every year on August 5th, inside and outside. Jeff thought he could get the interior done, we thought we could get the floors waxed and the emblems painted on the wall, all between tomorrow and August 4th. So it would look wonderful for the Naval Reserve, who are still very proud of their building and always want a tour of the whole building because they're thrilled at what we're doing there. So, I'm extremely disappointed. I understand where you're coming from, but we tried to get bids, we did, and we got some. And we thought we chose the best based on receipt of a bid and reputation of the people, the person that bid the work. Adrian worked here for, in this community for years, and then his son Jeff took over. I don't think we could pick a more reliable person, even if it is only one bid, like City Glass.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the good of the order.
We answered, yeah, just answered a couple of questions. So when we put this bid out, how long are we required to leave the bid before we close it? It has to be like open for us to receive?
I would have to check to see specifically what our code and our charter says, but I think that we have at times had bids out for as short as a couple of weeks.
Short as a couple of weeks, like two weeks, so it would be about the shortest you can do it. And it could take, how long would it take to put something like this together and do all the proper?
Not that long, because a lot of the bid document itself is a template, and for something of this nature, it would be rather simple to just drop information in it. However, before we put that bid out, I would need to make sure that our financial services department analyze the three current leases so that our assumptions are all true. I believe they are true with respect to the common spaces being the city's responsibility, but if there's a hangup with any one of those leases, then that could cause, that could cause a delay in us putting the bid out. So, assuming that there wouldn't be, we could get it out relatively quick, keep it out for a couple of weeks. It's not uncommon when we, when we post for, you know, for bid opportunities, for us to also reach out to those that we're aware might be interested in the job as well to say, hey, this is posted, you know, we invite you to put a bid in. Specific to this project also, just like when we're buying a truck, if there's, you know, certain amenities, certain features, certain, anything that we want, we want to make sure that we get, we tailor the bid specifically to reference those attributes or those things. So if we happen to get half a dozen bids from a half a dozen different painters, but they don't meet the specific special requirements or criteria that only one painter might meet, even if they're at a lower price, then when it comes back to City Council for consideration, we would say, you know, we're recommending bidder X, even though bidder X might be at a higher price, but because bidder X met the qualifications that we're looking for. And obviously, we would work with Up North Arts through this process. And I just, I just wanted to mention as a part of explaining, so that Up North Arts and the folks at home understand, is that if funding is coming through the city's coffers, if it's coming through the city's accounts, even if somebody gives us money, if it's actually coming through our own accounting system, we have to follow our purchasing procedures, codes, ordinances. We do have the ability of requesting a waiver for bid, but if that waiver isn't granted and we do go out for bid, which it says for anything over $7,500, we normally will go out for bid. Even if there's only one bid that comes back, like we witnessed tonight, that was for over $100,000, we still were able to check off the, you know, the bidding box, the procedural box for that one item. So, I know that doesn't resolve perhaps the feelings that you might have this evening, but it's how the process works.
I feel like, you know, the best thing we can do is make it a priority, you know, have that happen as soon as possible.
And I think, again, it's a process we have to follow because we are the steward of the public money, and the history in this has changed, and that's something I want to make sure staff looks at is because prior to 2018, there weren't leases and contractual obligations. The part of the lease I got for Up North today indicates interiors the tenant's responsibility. I couldn't find anything on common elements. So that's gotta be clarified if we're gonna expend city funds. So even, you know, if that's not clear and we have to work on that, we can still get the exterior part handled and do that, but I do think we have to follow, and I do want the information so we can make a clear decision based on what the requirements are.
Okay. Brian, did you have anything?
Oh, sure, I've always got a question. Marcus, I've heard something about a million-dollar grant that could be available to use the cleanup, the loft, number two site. Do you know anything about that?
I don't, but if you heard something, let me know.
Boy, I'm gonna chase that down. John, do you know anything? You're the grant guy.
Not specifically.
Along that line, I've had several conversations about the loft cleanup. You know, people understand that, you know, because of COVID, they had to step back in and they had to start reworking all of their finances. But people would really like to see that area cleaned up and at least just grass planted there so it doesn't look like it's a construction zone. So, if we can speak with the developers?
I think also the insinuation was that all of the environmental cleanup wasn't done on the site and that there was still grant money left and more environmental cleanup to do.
And that is true.
That is true, okay.
There is grant money there for an environmental cleanup?
Yeah, there's brownfield dollars that are already, it's already in place, it's already there for them to utilize and tap into for their cleanup of the second site.
So, why haven't they been taking care of that? Just out of curiosity.
It's a limited understanding, but my limited understanding is that the developer is trying to schedule all of that in terms of when they're gonna eventually start digging, to use that term, for phase two, which is building two. And that keeps getting pushed off because there isn't grant money yet through the state or other resources to close their funding gap for building two. So everything is still in stasis.
If you guys agree, I think we should push for them. I mean, we are very supportive of what they're doing, and we're looking forward to the second one. But in the meantime, and you know, that's right on North Mitchell Street, and people think it looks terrible.
I think we're all getting the same calls from different people, and there were a lot of calls on this. And Marcus, just because I think the understanding is not there, if, is it possible to implement the use of the environmental cleanup money for the environmental concern even before phase two project goes forward? Is that something the city can take the lead on so that that part of the site's clean, or no?
No, it's all under Michigan Community Capital.
Okay, and I think that's good for people to know. So it's not, because one of the calls I got, it said, the city, the city has this money, why won't you spend it to do it? And if I'm hearing it correctly, the information of the public is because to use that money, the project has, that's the first step of the project in breaking the ground, and that's not happening.
And, and it's not, the cleanup responsibilities, the onus, it's not, it's not our property, it's not on the city.
We don't own the property, yeah.
It's all on the developer.
And that's a good clarification.
Great, good, yes, happy to clarify that all day long.
Okay. Good. I have one other thing, not to drag the meeting on, but I had an interesting conversation with someone. You know, in the last couple of meetings, we've been hearing people say to us, "You're not listening." You know, and we say, "Yes, we are listening." But this conversation that I had was with another city that, in the process of public hearings, they set up a timeline whereby which we have public hearings, not unlike we had tonight, but we don't actually, they don't actually take action on that public hearing, the night of the public hearing. They schedule it for either a special meeting or for the next regularly scheduled meeting where the council would actually take all of that information, including everything that was said in the public hearing, what's been presented to them by the city staff, and then we have that time to process all of that, and then they vote at the next meeting.
So, there is no law or regulation or anything that could say that Cadillac doesn't, can't do that here. We, before even my time here, I think try to take action after the conclusion of a public hearing just as a means of keeping a process going versus creating an extra block of time where you're looking at extending, you know, an approval process. So, dare I call us fast? We are arguably somewhat fast because you can have, at one council meeting, we set the meeting, we set the hearing at one meeting, and then we give the presentation and ask for consideration at the next meeting when, at the conclusion of the public hearing. You could, you know, if not comfortable moving it forward, could always pause and say, after discussion, we wanna digest this for another couple of weeks, you know, bring it back at your next meeting. Or you could ask us to, I mean, if you want to build another...
Step in the process.
Which would be another, which would be a third meeting, you could always build that. But we, you know, typically move things through, which I know that depending on what the project is, especially those that are, you know, economic development related, they appreciate moving it forward.
Right, well, you know, and I can appreciate that they appreciate that. But, but, you know, we've just, we've just heard it so many times, people saying that or being upset with us, and/or council members saying, you know, "Gosh, I have to make a decision now, and I don't feel like I've had enough time for it." And so, it just got me thinking about the process and building in more time for the public to clearly, you know, state during the public hearing and have any discussions they want to have, and feeling like we're hearing them. And we're not, already on this night when we're having the public hearing, we vote right after they stand up and say everything they have against whatever we're voting on, and then we vote a different way.
Just remember the Up North Arts item for tonight, that it's not an ordinance or a sale of property, so it, even if we had that extra step, it would have been an extra step as a, for instance, for the land transfer within the lakes, but not for the Up North Arts item.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to bring it forward for discussion with the council and to see what everyone would think, because it seemed like it worked really well for that community.
Well, and I think what you're saying there, which I absolutely agree with, is communication and information. And I think part of the concern that we all have is when we get a recommendation on something, and we're getting the recommendation right before the hearing that we're asking to vote on it. So I think we can do it in a situation that we realize that's happening, I think we can build in that extra time. But again, and I think we've kind of asked and directed with you, Marcus, we want information ahead of time so that we have that processing, and in many times, that gives the public more time.
Sure.
To do it ahead of time.
Mike, with the other municipalities that you work with, is their process different than ours?
No, some are the same, but they, you know, one thing that I don't want you to lose sight over is, you know, if you are, because you will have public hearings where, are required by law, but the issues are pretty straightforward, nobody shows up, and you're ready to vote, right? So, you could always take action on those.
Okay.
Or, you could table anything you want to table and say, no, we're not ready.
Just like we did tonight.
Yep, what I would call it is postpone, because table gets into a weird parliamentary procedure, right? But we're gonna postpone a vote on this until the next regular meeting. And so, I do have, I do have some clients that do that, particularly on contentious, because you're right, taking in all of that public comment at one meeting and being expected then to process that, comment on it, discern what you're going to do, sometimes is a lot to do in one meeting. So, I do have, I do have, like I always said, a public hearing recently, and it was an amendment to a zoning ordinance, and we went through it, and there was a lot, there were a lot of public comments, and at the end of it, they said, okay, you know what, we're not ready, let's have a motion to postpone. We can take all this information in, meet at the next meeting, and then discuss and decide, which is what they did. So you always have that option.
And if it were a time-sensitive... And if it were a time-sensitive thing, we could also set a special meeting before the next two weeks if we, um, we needed to.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't, I would tell you that some, some of my, they, they haven't drafted formal policies, um, but some of my clients will not make a decision after the public hearing as well. They just understand that as a rule. It's not formalized anywhere, um, although you could adopt it as a, as a rule of procedure.
That's what the city did.
Yeah, if, if you wanted to. So I'll leave it up to the council to decide, you know, what, what works best for you, but you could do it a number of different ways.
So one of the other things to add is at the last council meeting, I think there was some informal conversation about looking at actually putting the setting of public hearings just under consent, where there is no discussion. But hearing the conversation tonight, maybe we should do the contrary, which is don't put them on consent, continue to have them under the regular agenda. And then instead of it just simply being a request to set the public hearing, it would basically be a first reading of the ordinance, which would be a full presentation that evening when we're asking City Council to set the public hearing so that you're getting the full presentation, and even if that means that we're bringing in outside people, whether they're consultants or builders or whatever the topic might be, you know, having those people there, so that you are then gonna get essentially two hearings, two readings of it. The second meeting would be, of course, your public hearing meeting where then we could do a recap of the presentation, open it up for the public, and then City Council can decide whether to approve or not approve, postpone, set for, you know, whatever you want to do versus creating a third, you know, a third meeting, meeting point. I'm just trying to think how that could bog your own agendas down, having something on it three times.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not hoping to bog anything down, slow anything down, but I just want us to open those avenues so that people feel as though they've been heard. We always have to make tough decisions and somebody's gonna be unhappy.
Oh, sure.
Um, but if we're thoughtful about that process and we're not making those decisions when we still feel, you know, there's a lot still that needs to be discussed.
During the public presentation, when we, um, set the meeting for public hearing, it gives a chance for not people to come in here for a public hearing, but people to understand it, um, reach out to us, you know, the paper to write the article before the public hearing.
Give them time to digest what's actually going on and identify the fact that, hey, this is important to me and I need to, I need to communicate this with someone, rather than just figuring out, figuring it out before that public hearing and then feeling like no one's listening. Thank you. I just wanted to start that discussion.
Yeah, no.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn then. Thank you.